There we go. So, uh, welcome everybody to the October 12th work session from Eugene or Springfield City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order Neil with roll call.
Counselors Van Gordon.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Steer.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
Pictionary.
Here. Thank you very much. Um, moving right on to the first item, which is the regional and state transportation policies. That would be Emma Newman, take it away.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for having me.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to, good evening. I'd like to discuss two different efforts that are launching. Um, one is at the regional metropolitan level and the other is at the state level. So the first is that the Metropolitan Policy Committee, which is the regional body that works on transportation policy, is launching a process to update the regional transportation plan. Um, this is a pretty substantial update that is revisiting the goals, policies, looking at establishing some performance measures. Uh, the overall effort is stemming from some federal regulations around regional planning for transportation. There's more information about that process in attachment three, if you'd like some more details. Um, the second piece that is launching is that the Land Conservation and Development Commission, which is part of the state, is launching an equity and climate-friendly rulemaking process. It's incorporating direction from Governor Brown's executive order on reducing greenhouse gas emissions that she issued near the beginning of this year in 2020. So what I'm here to discuss this evening are two parts. I'm seeking council direction on how you would like to communicate between city council and staff on both of these topics. There's a proposed communication plan that is open for discussion in your council briefing memo, attachment one. So I'm here to ask if the council supports that communication proposal, um, or if you'd like to make any adjustments. And then the second piece is that there has been some communication to the state and at the regional level around, uh, this process that we've seen coming our way with regards to greenhouse gas emissions reduction planning at the state level. I have an update to share with you this evening that I was, I was just notified today that I was selected for the rulemaking advisory committee process. So we'll have some Springfield representation on that committee.
Very important. Congratulations, Emma.
Thank you. And so thus far, this is kind of just the launch to the process. I've highlighted some key items from the rulemaking charge that the state was discussing, as well as some key priorities that have been some themes throughout communication thus far. But I'm here seeking your input on are there any additional Springfield priorities to emphasize as we start engaging with that coming state process? Is there anything that you want to adjust, anything missing? And with that, I would like to turn it over for discussion or questions.
Anybody have any discussion, uh, questions, comments? I, I just have one comment and I think, uh, being involved myself and Council Van Gordon involved with the MPC and I've been involved with the MPC for quite a while now. I really appreciate the comprehensive document you put together here and reflecting what, what Springfield needs, you know, and basically what it boils down to is that Springfield still needs to, we want to be flexible and not guided by other people's, you know, commandments, so to speak. But we also want to be a partner. And I think this is a good segue to, uh, working with those folks and still addressing the governor's orders. And I, there's, there's room to work in here. We just, you know, we're, we're just being very watchful and we have some good staff that's helping us watch that. So I appreciate that effort a lot and they've really done us good, uh, city council. So, uh, go ahead, Sherry.
Um, so just the, the lack of implementation funding. And so I'll just, um, direct this to you, Emma. Partially, we have seen in the past that the state has, um, provided some funding for biking and pedestrian. Um, is that part of this, you know, is that going to continue? You know, I, I realize the state has had to even cut back on some of their other transportation funding. But, um, how are they going to help us make possible this reduction in green get, in, uh, gas, who's it called? Okay. So that's one of the ways they're going to help make it possible is by providing funding for, um, pedestrian and bicycle. And another question I had was, is there any possibility that the state might consider funding, um, city-owned vehicles that would be electric?
Great question. Um, so as you can see, we've started to echo that, that need for implementation of funding. There's been some research done that was actually referenced in Mayor Lombard's comments to the commission earlier this year, that you can have all the great policies in place and visions set out. And if there's no money to actually build the bike paths or to operate buses or to maintain our roads, then you're only going to get so far. I think we're all very familiar with the timeline that it took to, um, develop like the Mill Race Pass, the Middle Fork Pass, some of these regional paths that are really significant. And there's, I would say even less funding available for that type of thing at this point in time. But that's why it's important to engage in the regional and the statewide conversations around how to allocate limited transportation funding and then are there ways to increase revenue to pay for the infrastructure maintenance and enhancement? And then with regards to electric vehicles, um, we could provide some more information on that. But I know that there are some state incentives with regards to, uh, electric vehicle purchase. And that's something that I'd be happy to follow up with more if you're interested in more information.
I would be interested. Um, I realized that LTD, for instance, is looking to, um, fund more electric buses. I mean, it's one of the things that we have a, we have control over are the vehicles that the city owns and operates. Um, we don't have so much control over private vehicles and how much pollution they put into the air. So just looking for ways in which we could actually make a difference. And, um, you know, it's those goals, as, as I recall, when we did that, um, what was it called? The, uh,
The scenario planning?
The scenario, yes. When we did that scenario planning, those were fairly high goals that, um, the state was asking us. Is, has any of that changed? Are we still there? Is that still what the expectation is?
So the state has set targets for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And one of the reasons for the governor's executive order and directing multiple different state agencies to more ambitiously work on this is because the current trajectory is not going to achieve those reductions and achieve those targets. So there's a number of different things happening with the Department of Land Conservation and Development, the Oregon Department of Transportation, the Department of Energy and the Department of Environmental Quality to all partner and take the lead on different efforts. Clearly the state holds some of the authority for making changes to certain elements. Uh, some things happen at the city level and some are, as you were speaking to, kind of the, the individual or the personal choices that community members make.
Thank you.
I see you, Steve. Go ahead. You're next.
Okay. Uh, I'm sure there's been some studies made within the city on replacing existing vehicles with electrics over time. And hopefully within that study, they're going to, how long, how much, how much longer will they last under the main, with less maintenance that will help pay for them in the long run? Make it easier. So ideas.
Thank you, Steve. Do I see any other comments from others, other counselors? Counselor Steer, go right ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Pictionary. Um, Emma, during the, um, during the run-up to putting this plan together, was there any discussion given to buying some bicycles as loners? And if so, were there more than one stop considered? I, I think that there are, um, there are cities that have a program of loaning bicycles where you can only return them to one place and it seems as though that would make them less popular.
So I think you might be getting a kind of bike share system. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's right, a bike share system.
Yeah, so back, I think it was February of last year, we brought in a discussion to the council and the direction that we received from you at that time was to pursue the expansion of bike share further into Springfield, if it's a possibility. Um, right now there's some conversations at the state level about how bike share is run with the economic impacts of COVID earlier on this year. A lot of bike share systems that were run by some of the larger companies were being taken out of smaller communities. But thankfully the local system here is primarily sponsored by Peace Health with a very generous sponsorship, which retains that local control. Um, so I continue to be in communication with the City of Eugene staff to see where they're at for the operations of the Peace Health rides, uh, bicycles and when there are opportunities. And, uh, even if there aren't opportunities, I keep continuing to voice our interest in expanding bike share in Springfield. Things just haven't synced into place and made it happen quite yet, but I'm hopeful for that in the future.
Okay. I, I was thinking that the, uh, the ideal sites for the bike share program might track pretty closely to the main bus depots. Um, maybe, uh, the one on, um, the one downtown off of B Street and then the, um, one, um, the, the, maybe Pioneer Plaza and then another one out in Thurston somewhere. But, okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor Steer, and I have Counselor Van Gordon up to bat.
So, um, I think there's pro, like, well, there, there, there's a couple of different layers here. First of all, like, having sit, sat on NBC, I thought that Emma, you and Tom have done a really good job of keeping Joe and I sort of up to speed and going the right direction. Um, when it comes to specific sort of bike share questions or like, how do we think about transportation? One of the big things, and you know, obviously when I worked in transportation, it was purely on the private sector, was that, you know, it was to look at it from a just pure, um, when, when we think about how we treat our fleet and how we, how we look for alternatives, look at it from a pure, uh, financial return perspective. So like, from, from a city perspective, if, you know, we have, you know, plant inspectors that, you know, we looked at replacing with an electric car because it's cheaper to run, I'm okay with that. I know that Eugene uses e-bikes during the summer. Sometimes I would be okay with that. Like, just, just more generally, uh, you know, a general look at how, how our fleet operates, I'd be comfortable with. But that's kind of not a little bit an tangent to what this regional and state transportation goals are. Emma, like, in, we keep hearing this, uh, referred to the governor's executive order and we've heard it in, when we've heard housing, you know, the housing governance, um, side of things. And Mark was talking to us two weeks ago. We've heard it with, from you. Um, so is it fair to say that the greenhouse gas executive order is pretty much driving a majority of rulemaking when it comes to transportation and land use right now in the state?
Yes, I would say that that is a key factor, um, for the Department of Land Conservation and Development rulemaking process. It's focused a lot on transportation planning rule, which is the state rules that determine how we have to do transportation planning. But it's also going to touch on some other elements as well.
And then part, and then part of the sort of, you know, communication from NPC is the federal plan that we're required to do and how we, we sort of think about and talk about that as well, right?
Correct.
Okay. Like, I, I think we've got the right categories as a council to keep talking about. This is a pretty complicated forward-looking topic, but really telling, continuing to tell rulemaking bodies that we want a lot of flexibilities, where it's really critical to meeting, um, meeting outcomes for the community. Oh, I'm sorry, one more question, Emma. Um, do you remember that, like, do you remember the, uh, presentation that, that came out of the ODOT's climate office? It's been at, on PAC, it's been at NPC a couple of times. They're, they're projecting with our current plans, right? That we will, that we will achieve, uh, CO2 reduction over the next 30 years, just not as much as the governor would like, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Van Gordon. Is there any other comments from council? Emma, do you have enough direction to proceed?
I didn't hear any amendments to what was provided in the packet. So unless there's any final thoughts on that, we'll plan, we'll plan to continue communicating with councilors, Pictionary and Van Gordon, uh, with their roles on the Metropolitan Policy Committee and providing updates, uh, when it makes sense to do so through this rulemaking process.
That's exactly what I got out of it as well. Thank you so much, Emma.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. All right, uh, moving on to next item, uh, number two would be revisions to council operating policies and procedures to allow for boards, committees and commissions, batch recruitment and opportunity for council annual review. Headed off by, uh, Mary Bee and, and AJ. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening, councilors. Uh, this is Mary Bridgette and AJ, um, is obviously here, uh, running the meeting. We're here before you tonight to, um, in a work session, talk about some potential changes to your operating policies and procedures. And then also give you an update on the batch recruitment for the, um, council committees. So I thought I would start there and then we would go through the proposed changes and get your feedback. The idea with the operating policy and procedures is that could come back in a regular session for your approval on the 19th. So, um, just as a refresher, the council had given direction to change the recruitment process for the council committees. Those committees are like the library advisory board, museum committee, VPAC, et cetera. Um, to batch them, meaning to only do, um, recruitment once a year, potentially twice a year if necessary. Before that, you were interviewing, um, as needed and it was a lot of interviewing time. So we thought we would try this new, um, process. Um, right now, the council is scheduled to have those interviews of potential, um, interviewees in November at your work sessions. The current recruitment is open until Friday, October 23rd. There are openings on several committees, uh, library board, museum committee, the VPAC, Springfield Police Advisory Committee, Historic Commission, Springfield Arts Commission, Springfield Planning Commission. Um, so if you're a liaison or if you know somebody who's interested in those, um, if you could, uh, encourage them to apply, that would be great. Um, staff has been doing an advertisement push on social media. It's on the website. They've put out several, uh, news releases. So I think the word's getting out there, but if you think of other ways you'd like us to promote it or other people, um, that you would be interested in having them serve, if they want to contact us, that would be wonderful. Um, and then a couple other things. Um, we are in the application, is a straightforward application where all the questions are same for applicants. Because one of the things that you're able to do at the batch is if you have a candidate who is applying for one committee, but you think they might be a fit on another committee, you could ask them if they wanted to serve on that committee or if you had more vacancies or something. So it gives you a little more flexibility. And we are going to ask one change in the packets you receive for the applicants. Um, and this sort of dovetails with the conversation you had, um, at your last meeting about people providing their name and address when they testify. So on the applications, um, right now, people submit their name, address and email. And that information gets published in our weekly packets and goes out to a lot of people. And we've gotten some complaints about that, just that people don't really like having their personal information out published like that. I mean, understanding it's technically a public record, but it's one thing to have something be a public record and it's nothing to actually publish it. And so we are asking if moving forward, we could redact those items. We'll have those items as part of the application. But if we could just readact that in your packet, if you want to get that information, we could get it to you separately. But it just might be something that makes people feel a little more secure when they provide that information. So if anyone has any feedback on that aspect.
So, um, we can, I got, uh, Counselor Van Gordon followed by Counselor Woodrow and my comments also, but go ahead, Counselor Van Gordon.
No.
And Counselor Steer.
I'm supportive of redacting, of redacting it and still collecting the, collect, you know, still collecting the information as part of the application and then redacting it from the public view. I think that would be appropriate.
Counselor Woodrow. Speak, you're on microphone.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. The only thing I wonder. Oops. We're still not hearing you really.
Yeah, it's broken up. I, it must be her Wi-Fi.
Okay, it says that it's, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can't hear me?
Yes, we can.
No? I, am I, yeah, let me, let me get him a camera again to see what happens. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. They're telling me I have a slow connection, so it's messing up. I'm fine with redacting. I wonder if there's a way to have Ward inter me? I wonder if there's just a way we could have the ward mentioned? Some, some of them just like to have, um, a span across the city.
Sure, I can talk to the recorder about that.
I think we got what you were saying, uh,
That would be, that would just, just the ward would be.
Yeah. That's what we got out of what you were saying. I think you're pretty broken up.
I, I am, yeah.
That's basically what you were saying is just make sure we had that, uh, ward where they lived in?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else, Merrily?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, and I, I'll just go ahead and chime in too. I have, I have no problem with that. I think we, we must have their address, et cetera. Their, their, their living or their residence address on their applications. I totally, uh, we definitely need to have that, I believe. Um, also, you know, even if we want to get into, if it has to be into a verification process down the road, I don't know, but it's good information to have upfront to verify their residency because that's part of the requirement of the committees and commissions, um, based on particular committees and commissions. Uh, but I am okay with that being redacted before it's published and just have it as, uh, record back in the CMO's office. But, um, I concur with Counselor Van Gordon. Um, I think it's important that we don't put out, um, PII out on the web as, as bad as it is already to prevent doxing, et cetera. So I think that's a good idea. Anybody, any, I got some head nods. Yeah, looks like we got a concurrence all the way across the board, Mary Bee.
Great, thank you. That will, um, that will help us. Does anyone else have any questions overall about the batch recruitment process or, um, anything out of the update I left out?
I, I think personally, I'll just jump in. I think that the batch recruitment process can, was quite a project and I, I think it's put together pretty well. And also does allow us some great flexibility if we see a candidate that may not be in a, uh, appropriate for one committee or not enough room for that person to move them over potentially if they're interested to move into another committee. That, that's great flexibility.
Okay, great. Um, the next item is you, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mary Bee, it looks like, oh, Steve, you didn't have anything? Okay, go ahead, Mary Bee.
Okay. Um, the next thing I wanted to do, um, and you just have to bear with me, uh, this is real in the weeds, but we, um, have to make some changes to your operating policies and procedures to implement the batch recruitment. Also, your operating policies and procedures is something the council is to, uh, review on an annual basis. So we thought we would combine both of them. Um, the attachment in your packet is a copy of your current operating policies and procedures. And then it has in blue, um, some commentary and then the changes are in legislative format, either struck through or underlined. So I thought what I would do is just go through those and get your feedback. Um, and then if there's anything else you see as we're going through it that you've always wondered about or, um, that you have questions about, we can certainly approach it then. Um, does that approach work? Yes.
Everybody else good?
Yes.
Head nods, okay. Sounds good. Sounds good, Mary Bee.
All right, get ready to be, you know, it's exciting, exciting stuff here, but here we go, so.
We cannot wait.
First page, on, uh, page one of 20, section 2.1 is, talks about when your meetings occur and that also you take a recess for summer. Um, this past year, you took a recess for spring break in March. And this is just an addition to allow that to happen. It doesn't mean you have to do it. It just gives you that flexibility and makes your rules more, more consistent. So it adds the month March into section 2.1.
Oh, I think because of Sarah, we should always start it in March. What do you think, people? Sorry, trying to be a little bit, you know, levity here. Go ahead.
Um, if that's all right, we can make that change for approval?
Okay. I have a question about that.
Sure.
So it makes it sound like we're taking a lot of month, you know, time off. Is there any provision about how much time, you know, because you mentioned March, June, July and August, and then again December and January. I notice it does say time for, so it doesn't mean we're going to take those entire months, but is there any restriction on how much time we can take? Is that something that's a part of, would that show up in policy?
You know, it's not in your policies, um, that, for example, the council has to meet a certain amount of time, uh, per year. And remember, all this is meant to do is to give you the flexibility to take that time should you need to. For example, in December, sometimes you'll start your break in December, but really the first Monday doesn't start until after January. So we, but you're basically meeting all through January. So, um, to answer your question, there's no requirement of you having to meet all, for a certain amount of time throughout the year. Um, and really it's just to give you that flexibility if during those times you wanted to have a recess, um, that you could.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mary Bridgette. We're ready.
Okay. Okay. The next change is section three, under that same section, that's also on page one of 20. Um, the first part is really just some rewording to make it more clear, talking about counselors being expected to attend all work sessions and regular meetings. Um, but it does change it if you are, if a counselor is going to be absent to notify the city recorder. Um, that helps her organize the meeting and ensure that there's a quorum. And then it also is, it used to be call the mayor or the city manager. And when it was multiple people, sometimes they, um, it made it more confusing because, you know, the right hand wouldn't be talking to the left hand necessarily and you wouldn't know who wasn't coming. So it just gives one person to be, um, the person who has the information about someone being absent. And that's really the only change there. The next change is more significant, um, and more substantive, I guess I would say. And that's going to section on page two of 20, section 3.2.6. So these are excused absences from council, you know, um, for example, illness, family emergency, scheduled vacation. Um, and this is adding if the council would like a, um, unemployment conflict reason for an excused absence. Um, and then what that does is that allows, if you have a work conflict, that that can be excused.
Mary Bridgette?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if it was prefaced and, and I don't know if the council was aware that, um, Christine and I sat down earlier this spring or later this spring. I guess it doesn't matter. Uh, later this spring, um, and went through all of these. We took several hours going through all these with the intent of making things better for staff, for organization and also easier for council to operate. Specifically, for example, uh, you know, Leonard, your schedule is always all over the place. And we were thinking that the, the employment issue is an issue and, but it's real and you're a volunteer and it should not be something that's going to hamper you and/or. hamper you and/or discourage other people from becoming counselors just because of those rules. So that was, that's, we went through all these and then turned them into Mary Bridget and AJ so they can go through and clean them up. But that, that was the, that's what prefaced all this was, was us going through that. So you folks have some historical knowledge. Go ahead, Leonard.
Yeah, thanks. I, I just wanted to say that the, that Mayor Lundberg had always been very tolerant, very understanding of war conflicts, and it was much appreciated.
I'll pass that along to her, yeah.
And that's been my same experience when I've traveled through, that like now we're sort of codifying what we've done in the past.
Right. Counselor Moore, you had your hand up, go ahead.
Yes, I realized that the thing I wanted to comment about was in the previous section, and so if we're finished talking about this, if we could go back to the location of our regular meetings of the common council. It's a 1-1, the regular meetings of the common council should be held in the city. Springfield City Hall, council changes the location must be in accordance with city code section 2.050. I wondered what that code was, if, if there is any other provision for where we might meet.
Oh, that's a great question. So I can tell you that under public meetings law, you are, jurisdictions are required to meet within their jurisdiction. So that's one, another area, and I'm, I can look up that section of code, that area of the code has general information about running the city.
Jurisdictions are then anywhere within the city?
Yeah, that's just under state law. That just means that, you know, the you, the Springfield City Council should have its meetings in Springfield. And then sometimes when you have joint meetings, you can go to the county or the city of Eugene, but it's to keep the meeting where the public reasonably believes it would be.
Okay, so in the event that we wanted to have, for instance, a town hall meeting or something where it was not a, we weren't going to vote necessarily, but where all counselors could show up. I mean, there's always this issue about how many of us can be together at the same place at the same time. But, you know, is there any provision for us, for instance, meeting in the Thurston area at some time just to have a listing session or, you know, in other parts of the city? And I realize right now we're meeting virtually, so we're meeting everywhere all the time, but in the event that we ever go back to actually meeting in person, is there, I just wondered about how restrictive this is that we have to meet in City Hall, and what if there were a problem with City Hall? I mean, we could meet in the, for instance, the Justice Center or something like that?
Yes, you could. So remember that these rules are your operating policies and procedures. You can deviate from them in certain circumstances. So I would say certainly if we had an emergency in that building, and let's say remote didn't work, you could meet someplace else in Springfield. If the council wanted to have some other kind of meeting, you know, I don't know if you recall, but when we were going to do the visioning project more in person, we were contemplating town hall type meetings and having more than one counselor be there, having a potential for that, and we were just going to notice those. I think the difference with those is they're not quote city council meetings with the agenda and everything that you guys do at a council meeting or a work session. So we might notice it as a quote public meeting, so we don't get sideways with public meetings law, but it doesn't mean you have to conduct it like you would in every city council meeting. But I do think having a consistent place to have your city council meetings lets the public know where you're going to be.
Right, well, I understand that, but I just, sometimes I, I had suggested in the past that we might do something different, and I was pointed back to this, which made it sound, or law, but it sounds as if it is, it is our policy, and so therefore if we agreed, you know, the council agreed to change or do something a little different, or to do a town hall where we could all be present but not be making, not voting, that that would be possible.
I believe that is possible.
So, are you done, Counselor Moore? So, just so for the future into this document, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Bridget, there's any part of this document that if the whole council feels they want to deviate from, with the consensus of the council or majority of the council and mayor or whatever, we can do that. It's not, this is not law, correct?
That's right. So you have the ability to change these policies. It's a two-thirds vote, actually, by the, by the counselors who are present, and I think that, you know, remember, I agree they're not, they don't have the same level as your charter in terms of having to adhere to. But the more you rely on these and act consistently with these, then the more you can keep yourself away from an attack that you don't follow your rules. So that's always something to keep in mind. But just like you were saying, Counselor Moore, if you wanted to do, if the council gave direction, they want to do a town hall meeting or meet in a different place of town, we could either temporarily change these rules and make that happen, or do some other change that shows your direction and that you wanted that to happen.
Thank you, Mary Bridget. So where were we?
On employment conflict for an excused absence for city council meetings.
And I think we had an agreement, you know, consensus there. Anybody disagree with that change? Perfect, next item.
Okay, next small change is just encouraged to give the city recorder 24 hours notice if you plan to remotely participate, which is a little mute now that we always remotely participate, but we drafted these before when that was a bigger, bigger deal. So that change. And then the next change is actually on page five of 20. And it's section 9.3. This has to do with records requests for electronic records. It's just updating it. So if we get an electronic, a record request for electronic records, we'll notify you, so you're aware. And then if you have any records that may not be on the city system, then you would know, okay, I can get those over to the city. And it's just cleaning up the language a little bit. It doesn't really change the process, but just updates it.
I think we're all good. Head nods, good? Okay, sounds good. Next item, ma'am.
Great, next change, page seven of 20. And this is section 1.2. And so this is talking about work sessions. And then this sets out what your agenda generally is at a work session, and as you know, your agenda at a work session is different, not as, doesn't have as many items as you have a regular session. There was a section about committee reports, but you guys generally don't do that in your work sessions. You do that in your regular meeting. So it's just housekeeping to clean that up and up to you whether you want to remove that or not.
I'm good with it the way it's written. I think we've been working pretty good. Anybody else want to change it? All right, oh, go ahead, Leonard. Counselor Steer.
No, I, thank you, Counselor Bishopner. I, I think it's a good idea because it really gives us an opportunity at the public meetings to explain to everyone what's going on in our committees, and I think it's better to just do, kill two birds with one stone, so to speak.
And Counselor Mo.
I have a printout of this. I don't have the page numbers on it, so I printed out before everything was going on, but I do have a comment on 5.6 when, when I can do that.
We can do that. I'll put a note on there.
Okay.
Okay.
And I agree with you, Leonard. You know, it gives greater, a brighter, a much greater reach when we report on committee, committees at the end of council sessions.
Okay, so we'll keep that section in your regular meetings. You'll have the opportunity to report on your committee reports or other business, but not have it in the work session. Okay, great. Okay, um, this section 1.4 is not something that gets used very often. This is another proposed change. But you could, there are some, you know, instances where you may call a special work session. And that would be, you know, the city manager and council leadership could do that. It used to have, but the proposed change is to remove the mayor and three members of the council as the ability to call a special work session. Could you hear any of that?
Yes, we heard a lot of that, not much of you.
Okay. Sorry about that.
It's all good. I love this virtual stuff.
So this has to do with calling a special work session, clarifying that city manager and council leadership can call a special work session and re, and changes it from the mayor or three members of the council.
Sounds good. To me, my head nods looking good? People smiling? All right, moving on, Mary B, thank you.
Okay, good deal. Moving on to section 5.1 on page nine of 20. And this has to do with public debate.
And Steve, she has it on the screen for you. I'm sorry to interrupt. I was just letting Steve know that she has this up on the screen for you to read if we're getting to that spot.
I, on, let's see, 5.6.
Right, she's coming.
Okay.
And she's coming up to yours, go ahead.
So this just allows, sometimes people will contact the council, and instead of their three minutes, they want more time, and they can, they contact the city ahead of time and, and get approved by that. And this just allows for additional time instead of 10 minutes. Sometimes people want five minutes, sometimes they need something else. So it's just updated for flexibility. It's not something that happens often, but it can happen.
Sounds good to me. I got a thumbs up. Flexibility, Merrily's happy. Everybody's happy.
Okay.
5.6.
5.6, Counselor Mo, I think this is the one that you had a comment about?
I do. Just like when we're batching the applications for the committees, the address is pretty, pretty sensitive. At the last council meeting, a lady spoke up that she was, a lot of people are afraid to do that when they testify, which the rest of the council agreed with, and I do too. And on 5.6, it says, when they address the council, they should state their name at, and address or location. I think it should be name and Ward, or name, city, and Ward, or Urban Growth Foundry. It's really nice to know sort of where they come from in Springfield when they speak, but I don't need to know where they live.
Right. Any other comment?
Yeah, I think a lot of us were like, you know, we're on the same sheet of music. I think just maybe a little tweaking to this one is, is in order, Mary B.
Yeah. Just explicitly taking the address out, I think would be, would be, the rest of us are fine.
And definitely insert Ward, and just like Steve was saying, it was actually within, and UGB would be a great location to have, so kind of clean that, clean that up. Go ahead, Steve.
There, there are some places in Springfield that are in Eugene address, but they're in like Ward 2, one of it, so it, it's, it can be confusing. I'd like to be more clear if we can.
Yes.
And then Sheri Moore definitely had your hand up. I'm sorry, I missed you a second ago.
That's fine. I just noticed that it says, all persons addressing the council shall do so from the podium after first having loudly. So we no longer are having people address us from the podium, so is there, is that something that we just need to take out?
No. We're just in a specialist circumstance.
This circumstance can go on for a while. I, you know, if in the public, in a public meeting, maybe we could say from the podium, but
they, they, they're addressing from a virtual podium at the moment when they, when they speak.
Yeah, Counselor Moore, you bring up a good point. I, you know, what we, our staff have been talking about sort of behind the scenes is that, you know, even once the pandemic subsides and we're back to more public meetings, it's very likely that public meetings, you know, all over Oregon and will be different, and that there'll be a hybrid of a remote and a public meeting in person. You know, we haven't worked out the details of that yet, but I do think that that's a good point, that it could very well be that people have the opportunity to email, you know, send written comments to testify via their computer from home or their phone or and so I'm foreseeing that once we sort of figure that out more, we'll come back to you with some other changes that are going to be more inclusive of that process. So I do think that's a good point. Because definitely these rules were written contemplating an old-fashioned city council meeting where you come in and do your three minutes and speak at the podium. So I think that's a, I think that's a valid point, and we'll probably have changes maybe in the near future about that.
Thank you.
Mary B, I got a recommendation, just we got a quick fix. How about, how about when acknowledged to speak before the council, they shall first having loudly and clearly say to their name, et cetera, they shall, you know, after, after loudly, clearly, say their name, but actually just after acknowledged and permitted to speak before the council, then blah, 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 blah. And it doesn't matter where they're at.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I will, we'll look at wordsmithing that to be more general.
So just for, for office procedural here, and I'll get you just a second, Sean. The, I think the spirit of our conversation is to tweak that to make it more applicable to nowadays times. And then we can move on without having to go back to the council to say, hey, was this tweak okay? Is the council okay with that?
Ask your question again.
It's, instead of having to come back, instead of Mary Bridget necessarily coming back to show us how she tweaked 5.6, that we can entrust her to, to contemplate how the people are addressing us, whether it's from a podium or from virtual, et cetera, but, but allow her to just put the correct words that are applicable.
Oh, sure.
Sean, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Like, I'm comfortable with that. I, I just think we want to sort of express our intent here, right? Because we're going to, if we just change the language and strike podium, technically it's accurate. But we want to just sort of acknowledge that that means that, you know, we would expect, we might see somebody virtually or something like that. Get a little bit more explicit. The only, the other thing that I would maybe take out, like, is maybe we could switch to something like provided their name, like clearly their name. I don't know where loudly and clearly came from. That seems like oddly specific. But, you know, just provide your name, I think would be fine.
Okay.
And I appreciate, Joe, that you mentioned when they're acknowledged, because I don't, you know, we don't necessarily want somebody standing up in the chambers and shouting at us from where they're standing, you know, so I can see where the podium came into play in the past. But I agree that we do need to, you know, change it so that it's a little more applicable to today and into the future. So I would trust Mary Bridget to do that. But are we, we're not voting on this tonight anyway, are we, or what are we doing?
We're just, we can't vote in a work session, but we can give them a head nod for consensual, consents, consensus, and we're good with it to move forward. So yeah, we're going to take care of this.
And you will, well, you will vote on it at a regular session right now scheduled for the 19th, so you will get to see the final, final, if you
And hopefully it'll probably just be in the consent calendar, be my guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one, one aspect of this, and I did really appreciate the discussion you had at your last meeting about people not feeling comfortable. They want to address their government, but they don't want to share their address. One wrinkle, and sorry to be the lawyer for a second, is that in land, when you do land use hearings, it generates this thing called the interested parties list, which is you are obligated to send a written decision to people who testify often. And so I would like, if it's all right with you, to be able to explain that and insert that in your rules, because you do land use hearings so rarely that I'm worried if we don't put it in your rules, we'll forget, and then we won't do it, and it will be kind of a, create confusion when we're, when we're getting ready to do a hearing, and your land use hearings are often very significant. So the smoother we can have those go, the better. So if that works for you, I think what I'm hearing is have acknowledged by the council in there and Ward or UGB. And if it's all right with you, address if we're in a land use hearing, you want to be part of the interested parties list. Is that okay?
Looks like I'm good with it. We got head nods and thumbs up. Merrily, you good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, next item is section 3.2, page 11 of 20. This is another sort of housekeeping. This is to, the council gets reimbursement for expenses. It's putting a 60-day window to submit expenses. It's really just an administrative matter to help us better manage that.
And that would include mild reimbursement requests, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure council knows that. As Sheri shows.
Say, Counselor Pictionary.
No, don't read it. And I was looking at Sean. Anyway, moving on, Mary B., before I get thrown out.
Let's go to the next one quickly.
Okay, quickly.
All right, page 12 of 20, section 4.2. And I apologize, I think I, I did not underline this, but it's the last sentence. This has to do with when you are, when counselors are speaking to the public or at an event. You know, it gets to that idea as a council speaking on behalf of the whole council, or are they speaking on what their views are? And it's just trying to clarify that if you're speaking on behalf of the council, you say, hey, I'm speaking on behalf of the whole council, or if you're speaking on your own behalf in your role as a counselor, but just your views, just to clarify that.
Go ahead, Sheri.
So in that, it says, if they, if they're invited to speak. So in the situation where a counselor wished to speak to a gathering and wasn't necessarily invited, you know, do they have to be invited? I mean, so I guess I just need a little clarification there, because if I were at a group meeting and I wanted to speak, not on behalf of the council necessarily, but I would identify myself as a counselor and then speak on my own behalf, how restrictive does this, you know, we have to be invited to speak?
Yeah, yeah, I would think that, that if you're invited as a counselor, you're going to be welcome there. But if you're going there just to speak and not invited guests, then you're there as a citizen.
But you still have to identify yourself as a counselor and, and identify the fact that you are speaking.
No.
No.
My understanding is that I'm a counselor 24/7.
That's not like a policeman. You are a counselor, but.
I need some clarification about that.
And, and I see you too, Leonard, after that, after Mary Bridget responds.
Um, well, I think that, I think that's a good point. You're trying to get at the difference, I think, of in a community event, you're invited to speak, or a community event that you may attend in your role as a counselor. But let's say it's not like, you know, something where you get a, a specific invitation, but you might still show up.
Well, not only show up, but may want to share with the group, you know, share as an individual, but I felt, in the past, I've always felt I needed to identify myself as a counselor, but that I'm speaking on my own behalf. If I am not, that I'm not representing the council unless I'm actually am representing the council, which I don't represent the council, but I do represent myself as, and I am a counselor. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you know, one workaround we might be able to do is maybe this, in which they're invited is, is more problematic that way. It could be just a community event in your role as a counselor. You know, if you want to attend something as a counselor and you're, you want to just be clear whether you're speaking, me, Counselor Moore, this is what I think, or us, the Springfield City Council, this is what we think. Is that, does that work?
That works for me, but is it true that I, so I'm just going to clarify this with Counselor Pictionary, that I am a counselor 24/7? I'm asking you, Mary Bridget.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking Counselor Pictionary. I think.
I'm clarifying this to him.
I'm sorry about that. I, I think that the way I would frame it, and I'm not trying to split hairs, is that when you are, let's see how to say this, when you're in your capacity, no matter what time it is, you're a counselor. And it's important to say that you're a counselor. I think if you are just in, you know, doing something as an individual, you should say, hey, I'm not here as a counselor, I'm just being an individual. So I, I do agree that I think that your role as a counselor and what people perceive is that you're kind of quote, always on, I guess. Um, I think, I, I do see it that way.
But you, but you should always clarify when in fact you're speaking as an individual for yourself, not necessarily representing the city or the council.
I think that's a good practice.
Okay, thank you.
And Leonard, and then followed by Sean.
Well, it, it, I, I think that that is the fix, Mary Bridget. I was, I was going to suggest add to the end of that sentence, in, in their capacity as a city councilor or something like that. But I, I, I would say that there are times where you're clearly not speaking in your capacity as a city councilor. And I would say, if you're, let's say you're a coin collector or you're a D and D player, if you're going to a coin collecting convention and you're speaking to other coin collectors, I don't think you need to identify yourself as a city councilor. And I, and I don't think that you would have to do it at a D and D convention either, because it was clearly, it's clearly not related to your duties. And so I, I would, I would use that as an example of a time when you wouldn't be required, even inside the city limits, to identify yourself as a city councilor. Isn't that correct? I'm, I'm asking you, Mary B.
Yeah, I think that's a great example.
Okay.
And Sean, go right ahead.
I'm concerned that Trucker Lynn is questioning coin collecting or D and D playing. I guess I'm not super concerned about really litigating all the rules here down to the T. I think it's right, like, it's upped us to sort of back, back up and talk about the intent of what we're like and how we act appropriately in the community. Because the reality is, is that we're all, we've all been doing this a long time. And we should be really clear with people when we represent the voice of the city and the voice of the council. And what, you know, we should be really clear with people when we really don't, and we're just speaking our, pontificating our own opinion. And I don't know that Mary Bridget's going to be the one that's going to be able to litigate that down to the actual T. I think it requires a little bit of judgment to really put ourselves in positions where, when we're ready to speak for us as a body, we, we know those moments and we can do that effectively. And when we're not, we should be really clear with the people we're talking to about what our opinions are and what our beliefs are, because we're representing ourselves. We're both at the same time.
I'm just, so can I just say that I have been told that I could not speak at a public gathering because I was a city councilor, even though I was speaking for myself? And so that's why I'm asking Counselor Van Gordon.
I, look, I don't know the exact situation for one, like, I can tell you what I've done in the past is when, if I've been asked to speak as a counselor, as an elected official on places, I've just been clear. It's like my opinion on, say, leadership and how voting works or whatever is Sean's opinion. It's not the counsel of Springfield's opinion, right? And I think it's really easy to get lost in that. And we just want to put our, kind of put our hands in the middle and say, like, guys, we're, there's days when we speak for the whole council, there's days when we don't, and we've got to be really crystal clear with the community when that's the case.
Okay, I think this horse is pretty beat up, but makes a lot of sense and very important. Are you good to go with what you have, Mary B., on this one?
Yep, I think I got it. The next change is page 14 of 20, section 2.1. And this is when we're getting into boards and commissions and committees. And so this just is a change that council leadership thought it would be good to have the statement of purpose for each committee on the application. So I think that lets people know who are interested in being on the committee, you know, what the role of that committee is. Each committee has a statement of purpose. And it really is when a committee is created, just to give some focus to a purpose of that committee.
That's kind, Joe?
Go for it, Mary.
Yes, I wanted to say, I agree with this one a lot, because I think we sometimes have people show up to interview for a committee that has a different idea of what the committee is for than what the committee is actually doing. So I think to have a stated purpose that's, that's fairly specific. I mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, lengthy or anything, but fairly specific as to what the purpose or mission of a, of a committee is. I think that's really good. Gives people applying for it an opportunity to, to get a handle on it ahead of time.
Okay, great. Well, if that works, then we'll add that.
Thumbs up, people. Good. Right on.
Okay. The next section is just a little further down the page, 2.3. And this talks about, this is when, in your first regular meeting in January, when the mayor appoints the council liaison spots to the city boards, commissions and committees. So as you all know, you're all liaisons on several committees. And old language was, if the council was in disagreement, they may overrule an appointment if it is a council representative. Meaning, I think what this is trying to say is that if the mayor made a decision and the council was like, no, I don't think he, you know, that person should be the liaison, they could override it. And this is just asking to remove it. It's not something that I have seen ever happened, but I suppose a coincidence to your rules. So that's one proposed change about that.
Okay, and the next?
Okay. Next one is, um, this is on page 15 of 20. Section 3.7, which we just ended up redrafting. And this is really the batch recruitment section. So it allows you, it, it just says that you'll fill vacancies as needed. You can fill them however you want to fill them. So if you want to batch them, or you don't want to batch them, you can, you can do that. It sort of generalizes publicizing a little more instead of things like having to be in the paper or other things. So it talks about media and website postings. And then it talks about filling out an application on a form provided the city manager. That gives us a lot of, I think, regularity and consistency in the information you're getting. You do have interviews for applicants, budget committee and planning commission, MWMC, are ones that you'll do interviews for. And I'm thinking El Rapa probably needs to be in there. And sometimes those bodies will give you a recommendation. They don't have to. This council has, it's my understanding, the direction is, is that you like to hold the interviews for the other committees as well, but you would like some flexibility. If someone is reapplying for a second consecutive term and they want to be on a particular, you know, for example, they're reapplying to be on the library board, that they don't have to be interviewed again. And the mayor and council president could waive that interview. The council still has the opportunity to appoint that person, so they still have the final say. It just sort of speeds up the interview process.
Thumbs up. Sheri, go ahead.
I just had a question about term limits. Do we have in here, and I didn't see it being addressed, term limits for people on committees?
I think those are on the committees. Oh, I'm sorry, I bumped in. They're listed on the committees.
That's a great question. Those are, I believe they're, I won't be able to find it right this second, but they're in here for your operating policies. I think people do two consecutive terms and they have to take a year off and they could come back.
Thank you.
And the next change is section 3.8 on the next page. And this has to do with following the interviews, you know, you all discuss and arrive in an appointment by consensus. And then actually, they're not appointed until the, at the next regular meeting, you know, the council takes that action. So this is some old language about if you can't reach a consensus, you do a written vote. And if there was a tie, the mayor would break the tie. And I think it's just a suggestion to remove that language as, as not being current.
Sounds good to me. Anybody else? We got, I heard Mary Lee say, yeah, so. Okay. Looks good, Mary B.
All right, page 17 of 20. We are getting to the end, I promise. This is just section 3.15, updating how we'll train committee members, volunteer committee members about ethics. There used to be a specific statute about planning commissioners, but it's been repealed. So as you remember, we drafted that guide. We're going to give the volunteers all the guide and then have a quick training with them about their responsibilities in terms of public official ethics. That's your conflict of interest, use of office kind of stuff.
Yes.
I got one quick question. Did anybody else have a question on that one? So Mary B., on that one, it says here that it's the committee, it's, let's see, the get a briefing by the board, commission, committee, task force, chairperson or staff liaison. I would like, if, unless people disagree, I would like to make it mandatory that staff liaison is involved in that. And that the, that the chairperson can be. But if the chairperson gives them some sort of briefing and training and that relieves the staff liaison from doing that, I don't know if I like that. It kind of hurts with, with, with consistency, because a chairperson is a temporary position and it, and it could go askewed.
I think that's a good point.
I, I need some clarification. What are you, what are you saying?
On 3.15?
You're saying that the liaison would, would give.
The first sentence, the first sentence, where it says,
Right.
or task force chairperson or staff liaison regarding duties and responsibility of the members of the body. So what that's doing is, is allowing a chairperson to do the training, et cetera, or that the briefing of that committee to that person. But yet the chairperson is, is sometimes, and actually is a revolving seat, but the staff liaison should be provide the consistency. So I don't have a problem with the chairperson helping another person, but, but I wanted to make sure that our staff liaison for each committee and commission is directly involved with new people being appointed and that they get given a breast and, and, and fill in the workings of each one of those commissions and committees.
So you're just saying remove the, you're saying that they would receive a briefing by the staff liaison. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't want to eliminate the chairperson. I want to be able to allow the chairperson to do that, but always the staff liaison. So I guess you could just eliminate the chairperson and they can do that on their own without having to be saying it's okay.
Okay.
I just want to make sure the staff is involved in that, not, not drop it off on somebody that's, that's a chair volunteer.
Okay. Any other questions about that one?
We good to move on?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, page 18 of 20 is section 5.9. And this is sort of related to training volunteers. Adds a sentence that violation of this provision may be caused for removal from a board, commission, committee or task force. This has to do if they are, kind of the same discussion, if they're there speaking on their behalf as an individual or as a representative of the city. And just recall that volunteers serve at the pleasure of the council, so you have the ability to remove somebody if they are not complying with the rules of boards, committees and commissions. And I think this is just clarifying when people are out in public.
I like it.
Yes.
Right.
Everybody else good? Pretty good? Head nods, okay.
Okay, last one, page 19 of 20, adding a 6.8. And that's just having minutes from boards, commissions and committees available for the council. So I think the city manager's office can sort out how they want to do that, if they want to send those to you periodically or just have them available. But it's just allowing, I think, the council to have more of a connection to those minutes.
Sheri?
Yes, so I don't know how difficult it would be. Most often, minutes are electronic anyway. I'm wondering if they could be posted on the website under the committee, so that people could have an idea of what's going on in these different committees. I'm not sure that that would be a requirement necessarily, but it just seems to me that they provide minutes to the mayor and the city council that also should be provided to the public.
Yeah, I can certainly check with the city manager's office about doing that. That seems reasonable.
Go ahead, Sean.
Um, yeah, so I, I like the provision. I think, I think we would all benefit for, for additional. Um, yeah, so I, I like the provision. I think, um, I think we would all benefit for, for additional um, access to, you know, additional to access to minutes. Um, I don't know that emailing them to us is the right answer, so if the, if the CMO comes up with a way where, you know, they exist in a file directory or something and we can go get them when we need them, or we know how to go get them, um, I would be okay with that. We're, I'm good self-serving, doing a little self-service. I don't necessarily need them emailed to me.
Okay.
And I'm gonna, go, oh, go ahead. Uh, I didn't see you, Mary Lee, go ahead.
I know. I, I, I understand what Sean's saying. If that is the case, I think it would be helpful if we had a um, a month calendar as to when the meetings were held, so that then we would know when to look for them if we wanted to find them. So I mean, if it was just provided for the counselors, just what, when each meeting happens during the month. So that if we had a specific one we wanted to follow up with, we would know when, when that meeting was, was being held. That would, that's all. So I have no problem with what Sean said, just, just make it, make it easy so we know when those meeting, those minutes might be available.
And Sherry.
So if in fact we have a month calendar, is that something that could be provided on the website again for the public to be aware of when those meetings are being held?
Yeah, that's a great point. I think they are already on the um, events in the, on the website, but I can confirm that. And um, I think this brings up a good point. Another thing AJ and I looked at in this project was updating the website on boards, ca, um, commissions and committees. I think it needs a, a refresh and uh, so it's more um, friendly to the public and um, for the volunteers.
Thank you. Yes, I agree.
Sean, go ahead.
Um, this may be a little, like, this may be a little bit of a tangential question, because it may exist in the bylaws of individual committees. What drives when the agenda's published and when the, when the actual packet of information gets out? It seems like based on um, based on the committees that I sit on, they come out at all different times. Is there something where we write down that this is what our goal and plan is to get the information to the committee members?
That's a good question. I'll, I'll answer it and then AJ can jump in. So I think the sort of backstop is the note, these are, all these meetings are subject to public meetings laws. So the backstop is the state statute, which is at least 24 hours. Um, the council, you have a, and planning commission, both those committees meet more regularly. They have a very set time. You know, packet comes out Thursday, meetings Monday, a set process. I don't believe the other committees do have a set process for when their committee, when their pack, quote packets come out. Um, unless AJ knows differently. And I don't think it's something that's necessarily approached in the bylaws.
And so this is AJ.
Yeah.
Yes, um, you are correct, Mary Bridget, as far as, it's at the discretion of the staff liaisons with the knowledge that they must provide it at least 24 hours prior. That being said, we have allowed flexibility in our boards, commissions and committees. With the exception of the planning commission, of course, um, they are similar to council as far as publishing and packets. Um, but we have allowed for flexibility, therefore, um, oftentimes agendas will be posted of boards and commissions. They will send the agenda out to interested parties, but they don't necessarily send out the entire packet. Um, the packet does go to the committee members. So it's been a matter of flexibility. That being said, we can standardize things. It, it just reduces that flexibility.
I, I would, my, my opinion is I would be really interested in taking that kind of approach and being just a little bit more consistent with, with, when they come out and making sure that we're sort of doing a logic check to, that our volunteers have an opportunity, opportunity to read and digest packets. Um, but that, that's my opinion on it. Thank you.
So, quick question, Nancy, is, or AJ, Nancy. Correct me if I'm wrong, all of our upcoming events and committee meetings are already on the website, correct?
This is Nancy. Uh, yes, that is correct.
Okay. So that takes care of that. And also their links there, I, if there's not links, then I would encourage, just like what Sean was saying, just provide links, so there may be a link to their packet for each meeting that's on the website, something that's, that can connect them to the information, makes it easier. And I too do not want a, an influx and, and increase of emails based on all the activities of the committees and commissions, because if I am curious about that, I know where to find that. So, okay. Is that clear as mud with, with you guys?
No, I think that's helpful. That, that's, that's good feedback. Those were all of the changes to the operating policies and procedures that we were going to um, propose. Um, so unless any other counselor has anything else they'd like to see, we can finalize these and have these back to you at your next regular meeting to adopt.
Sounds good. Uh, head nods, everybody good? Mary Lee?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mary Bridget. It's a lot of work. Thank you, AJ. I know you put a ton of work into this as well. So uh, anything else for the good of the order on the work session from staff? Okay, having none, our executive session is slated for seven o'clock. As far as noticed, does this apply to where we cannot start our executive session before seven? Mary B?
Um, I just need to confirm with AJ. I think it's an approximate time. Is that right, AJ?
That's, that was my understanding, I thought.
It is an approximate time. That being said, we will need a few minutes to get out of this meeting and go into the other meeting platform, which is the go-to meetings. Um, so by the time we get in there, it's likely to be closer to seven o'clock. Um, and, and we do need to be able to clear the chambers and everything. So I would say if everyone's comfortable, just plan on being into your go-to meetings platform by seven o'clock.
Um, I'm questioning AJ, where are we finding that?
It, it, you received a calendar invite.
A calendar?
If you did not if you did not accept it in your email, you have received a calendar invite. It may be in your email inbox, or it will be grayed on your calendar.
Okay, thank you.
So after that, from AJ, I guess we can go ahead and close this meeting and go back and come back to the executive session. And whenever she's ready to get everything together, we can start when she's ready. Let's do it. See you all in a few minutes.